...schedule, meeting to order. We'll start by welcoming all our visitors and guests, citizens. Uh, thank you guys so much for coming out. We'll start in our normal fashion. We'll open up with prayer. Uh, Mr. Hill, can you lead us in prayer tonight and follow by the flag? Pledge.
Mr. President, Father, we thank you for the opportunity to come tonight and conduct this, uh, business for the city. God, I just pray that as we do so, uh, we keep you in mind, God, that, uh, we would do things that would honor you and God, uh, expect a blessing in return. Father, just be with each one of these that worked so hard, uh, for our city, each one of these employees. Thank you for each one of these citizens that are here tonight. And remember, pray. Amen.
Face the flag, Lee. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mick, is that, is the...
Give it to the world.
Oh, uh, we'll see what happens. We've been having trouble with our wifi all day today, so, uh, we're gonna try to take the, take the rules, so we'll see if this voting system gonna work.
Mr. Crawford.
Here.
Mr. Dalton.
Here.
Mr. Hill.
Here.
Mr. Lauer.
Here.
Mr. Ray.
Here.
Ms. Spinks.
Here.
I'll vote for you.
Oh, we got the...
Let's see if it gonna work yet.
Okay.
It's working. Let's see what happens then.
Okay.
I know what we're doing.
Uh...
Tommy, Tommy's didn't go in.
Tommy's good, man. We got one set of council minutes to approve. Minutes from our July meeting is there. Any changes or corrections or deletions to those minutes? Not, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Williams, Mr. Crawford, second by Mr. Lau. If you will cash your vote. Motion care. I got a couple of things on my report. First, if the Hardeman County Tigers Don't try to be shy. This young group of men here, I'll have to let the coach tell what they played in and where they played, but wanted to, wanted y'all to meet this young group here. Proud of them representing, uh, our community, so, Coach, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, uh, I'm Mauricio Rivers. Uh, I'm the coach of a seventh grade group of, uh, Hardeman County Tigers. Uh, we went to Dallas, Texas about two week, two weekends ago and played a national tournament. Uh, they turned out how we wanted to, but out of fifty-two teams, we played six.
Mm, good.
After the national tournament of the seventh grade group. Uh, me and Coach Cross, uh, have coached them to an overall record of this summer of, um, I think it was thirty and five.
Good.
Thirty-five from April to July. Uh, I turn it over to the eighth grade coach, Coach Priest.
My name is Chief P. I coached the eighth grade group. Uh, I don't know our state of reference, you know, but we coach the same team out here, but we are also proud of our county, too. We play the national tournaments a couple of weeks, so we appreciate it. We had a great season.
Let's get these guys on hand. You said all of them was in seventh and eighth grade?
Uh, most of it. My team was seventh grade going to the eighth grade this year, and we had an eighth grade team. They were eighth grade then, but then they're going to the high school.
Wish I was that tall in seventh. I wish that, I was that tall now. Good job, guys. Thank y'all so much for representing both in Hardeman County. Uh, keep up the good work. Thank y'all. Next, we have a couple members of the Stonewall Travel Ball Team. I think Texas know a little bit about West Tennessee after the last couple of weeks. Uh, so, Mr. Moose, well, I'm sorry. Uh, Coach, will you come on up?
I got a cheat sheet. I'm not as good as Murray, so...
All right, we, uh, we, uh, this is Kingston and Kane, uh, part of the Jackson Stone, uh, twelve-year team. Uh, we went to Dallas, Texas, uh, uh, July the fifth through the twelfth to the, uh, USSA Triple-A, uh, or Double-A World Series, and, uh, we ended up winning, uh, the whole thing. We do have, uh, thirteen players. Uh, we got, uh, five from Jackson, two from Bolivar, uh, one from Brownsville, uh, one from Parrish, Tennessee, Savannah, and two from Henderson. So, uh, then one from Crockett County. So, uh, overall, the whole season, we went, uh, thirty-eight and ten. Uh, that was playing, I guess, around three states, then Texas. So, we had a pretty good season.
Good job. Thank y'all so much. Like I said, Texas, I think, knew about, knew about us, baseball and basketball. All right. Making a grand entrance, Ms. Brenda Woods, just come on down. We got the, Mr. Joe and the Bel, uh, Bella-Balver Community. Uh, you guys will come on down and I'm gonna recognize you.
I just want to bring the picture.
No, that's okay.
I think she was sitting out there timing that. She was waiting. Joe, you don't have a problem talking in court. You can talk now.
I brought a cheat sheet off. Lawyers are accused of talking too much, so I thought if I made my notes on this, y'all wouldn't think I could talk too long. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers for giving us a couple of moments tonight. Uh, this is part of the group that we call Build a Better Bolivar, and our concern was that, much as we like our town, we want to be a better place to live. And we can do that by providing activities for kids in the summertime. The folks that worked toward this this year were Ms. Brenda Woods, Ms. Mary Ann Bult, Willie Parks, Jeff Barnes, Todd Foltz, Mike Miller, Councilman Dylan Hill, and Mayor McTissit. And we met, gosh...
Every Wednesday.
April.
Every Wednesday.
April through now, basically, put, trying to put together a program, things for kids to do. And we started this out, we didn't, couldn't rub two nickels together. Uh, didn't have any assets, didn't have any thing that we thought we could put together, and we have just partnered with folks in the community. Hardeman County Schools has been so good to help us out. Hardeman County Sheriff's Department and Bolivar PD have come through in a really big way for us. Devco has been huge, uh, and especially Brad Grant from with Devco. I, I want to give him props. And Deborah Brassfield, who put our shop down on the squares, has done just wonderful. What we've managed to do is we've put a summer program together where we've had three field trips so far. We did a field trip to Chickasaw, took about sixty kids. We did a field trip to the zoo where we took forty-six. And we did a field trip to the Civil Rights Museum where we took over a hundred. Uh, all of this was free to the kids that wanted to go. Uh, Ms. Brenda helped us arrange food through Southwest. The school system was great to help us with transportation and some expenses. Uh, so the field trips were wonderful for kids. We've got one more field trip coming up, should be the twentieth of this month, and we're able to take them to a Redbird camp. Uh, we have had free movies at the Louise's on Tuesday afternoons, and that's where Devco and Brad have come in so big to help us out. Uh, folks could bring five dollars, they can get popcorn and a coke. If you go to a movie, you know, you've gotta get a second mortgage to go to the convention. So, they, they, they've been really good for us. Um, we've had, uh, tennis camp. We brought in a coach from Illinois that came down and taught a camp at the high school courts for the week. Had about fifteen kids out there, and Mike Miller, I think, had as much fun as the kids did, going out to that every day. But, uh, we've had a good summer. We started late, and we, but I think that we've had a good summer, and we've been productive. Uh, we're looking for things that we can continue to do after the summer to, to keep going with this. One of the things, we're gonna work with Carl Perkins Center on their Festival of Trees, and we're gonna work with them toward, uh, field trips for kindergarten, first grade, and second graders to come over Festival Trees, have a time when they can do some projects, have a story, and possibly go to another movie with Devco. We've been working that out with Brad. Uh, we are looking at the possibility of sponsoring a Cub Scout hat through the school system. Since Cub Scouts is now boys and girls, we can include everybody with hats. So, uh, again, we're, we're looking for things that we can do to improve the lives of kids in Bolivar, and if our kids' lives are better, our lives are better. That's kind of the premise we're working on.
Thank you so much, Joe. Appreciate all your hard work. Thank y'all. And last I have on my report, Mr. Gary Barber, if you would. Okay, I didn't see him. If you come on down, please, sir. I think we all, everybody in the community knows Mr. Barber. Have a proclamation here, uh, just to celebrate his retirement and say thank you for the many years you've put into our, uh, supporting our community. Since whereas in May of nineteen eighty-one, Gary Barber began building his career as a store manager, trainee for Walmart. And whereas he's worked for Walmart for forty years, providing his professional and outstanding management services. And whereas he's a former U.S. Marine and father his, uh, father attended college at Ole Miss in Oxford, Mississippi. And whereas he's moved to Bolivar to serve as the Walmart Store Manager Division One in nineteen ninety-six, then to the Walmart Supercenter. And whereas Gary has been an invaluable asset to the Walmart Supercenter and willing to go in extra mail and offer assistance to his customers. And whereas he's assisted the city of Bolivar throughout all departments, as well as the Bolivar Hot, Hardeman County Library and the Hardeman County Imagination Library in multiple ways, his support has served our city in so, so many ways. He has always been reliable, responsible, and very proficient to everyone for our entire county. And whereas Gary has accomplished numerous things to Hardeman County by serving as the Vice President of the Carl Perkins Center, served as, uh, on the Chamber of Commerce Board, Rotary Club, Amnest Board, Solid Waste Committee, and currently serves as the Hardeman County Commissioner since two thousand and sixteen. And whereas Gary has dedicated a huge portion of his time and services to his career and his community. And whereas Gary will now be able to enjoy spending more time with his wonderful wife and family and enjoys grandchildren, hobbies, and continue his dedication to Hardeman County, now therefore, I, Julie McTissit, Mayor of the City of Bolivar, hereby proclaim July twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-one as our day to celebrate and recognize this as Gary Barber Day, and I hereby set my hand and seal this twenty-ninth day of July twenty-twenty-one, Julie McTissit, Mayor of Bolivar City Council. Thank you so much, Mr. Gary. We can't thank you enough. All right, uh, also on my report, you guys will see that, well, I guess they probably announced that, Curtis always fuss about me stealing everybody's stuff, so I won't even bring it up. I'll let everybody announce their own events. And what they don't announce, I'll catch it at the end. So, we'll start with our Standing Committee reports. Uh, on the Energy Authority, Bolivar Energy Authority Board met July twenty-sixth, regular meeting. Tyler Lau signed his oath of office, approved a fiscal year bad debt right off of nineteen thousand nine twenty-two. The board approved the switch from Exeryon to Orbit One Pay for all online payments. Hopefully, uh, this will save BEA around five hundred dollars a month and make, uh, the customer experience better. No fee increases for our customers. Tended to set October first to go live on the, the, uh, new software. Office Board meeting changed to August twenty-sixth because of the Tennessee Valley Public Power Association Annual Meeting. That concludes the electric department. Next, we have utilities, Mr. Cliff Henson.
Mr. Mayor, Council?
Uh, Utility Board had a little delay in their meeting in July, so we met on July the fourteenth. And in that meeting, we, uh, discussed the, uh, project for the relocation of the gas lines on Old Sixty-four Highway. Matter of fact, we had two people to bid on that. Uh, R. Jones Underground out of Henderson and then TJ Construction out of Florence, Alabama. RJ Underground came in with seventy-five thousand three oh six. TJ came in at eighty-two thousand eight fifty. Uh, Utility Board, uh, voted to go with the recommendation of Robert Stigall, our engineer, and go with a low bid of seventy-five, seventy-five thousand three oh six. So, Mr. Mayor, I would appreciate a motion on, uh, approving this recommendation by the board.
Questions on that? There are motion to approve a low bid for seventy-five thousand three oh six. So moved. How motion by Mr. Woods? Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Spinks. If you will cash your vote.
Of course.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, is that in the budget or is that something that...
No, Mr. McKenna, it didn't get in the budget because we didn't know this was happening until we got word from the county that they were gonna place that call.
So y'all want to mean the budget is what you want to do?
Uh, well, we've got funds set aside for such stuff like that, so I think we're covered on it.
Okay, okay. That's good. That's good.
If we'll cash your votes, please. Motion care.
Okay, uh, one other, a couple of other items. Uh, we are now fixing to take bids on a replacement of a gas line out on Fifty-seven outside of Middleton going toward Pocahontas. This line is fifty-eight years old, and the life expectancy on that line was forty years. So, the board also decided to start taking bids on replacement of that line, so we'll come back next month, hopefully, or probably October before we can get the bids in to do that project. And, uh, gas prices are up this month. Um, they're creeping up seventy-four cents, and I talked to our TAC representatives by the gas, and they say it's probably gonna increase just a little bit more before it gets any better. It's fine demand. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cliff. Uh, Fire and Police, Chief, Chief Price and Chief Joe, both is in a meeting over on the other side. They're about to change over. Finally, after how long, Jim, the four years of dispatch, we finally changing over and going live on the nine-one-one, uh, believe in Wednesday, I think. And they're working with Karen and all them over there to get all that situated. So, I think they're meeting in the community room. So, you have their reports. Also, Lynn wanted me to invite you guys to come out and walk, second Saturday walk, um, at Sand Beach Lake at seven AM, uh, this Saturday. So, if y'all come out, um, he's the host for, uh, under Healthy, Healthy of Hardeman, he's hosting this walk. And of course, he wants to set a record. He always trying to have bragging rights and stuff, so you guys, if y'all wanna come out and help support Lynn, August fourteenth, Saturday, seven AM, to do the walk there. Next, we have Parks, Mr. Stat.
Mayor, Council?
Um, we signed a contract with A2H Engineering to plan and oversee the construction of Sand Beach Lake Playground, Pavilion, and Restrooms. The Diabetes Grant will pay a hundred fifty thousand toward these projects. Also, we hosted a softball tournament, had eleven Pavilion reservations at City Park. Close my report.
Thank you, Mr. Stat. Next, have Recreation, Mr. Ford. Hold on, Eddie, you excited tonight? That's the first time I ever seen Eddie jump up the door.
That's why we changed.
Keep him walking.
You there, Council?
Recreation wants to report on our five through thirteen of the Soccer League registration. It has started, and it'll end on our August the twenty-eighth, so we've been pushing that hard. Took signs and, and registration forms to the schools in Hardeman County. Uh, so we're looking forward to a big turnout with our Soccer League this year. Uh, also, uh, city sponsoring a cornhole tournament, uh, this year, and I think that's one of the things the mayor is excited about, and he was about to speak on earlier, but we, we are advertising and pushing that. Well, we'd like to get a large turnout. We'll have, um, vendors there. We'll sell food. We'll have a DJ, um, and several teams that'll come from out of town. So, it'll be at the Farmer's Market, August twenty-eighth, on the Saturday. We'll start registration from five to six and go until we're, we're done. We'll have prizes. Uh, so we're looking forward to, to that. Uh, hopefully, we'll continue this, this event. Uh, also, our tennis initiative, we, we're gonna try to have the last Saturday of every month out at the City, City Park Tennis Courts. We're gonna continue to push and try to get our youth around here involved in tennis. Uh, so every last Saturday at nine AM, in, well, any ages, we initially was, were targeting, uh, nine through twelve and, uh, five through eight, some of the smaller kids, but we're gonna accept any, anyone who's interested in playing. Uh, we'll, we'll be out there the last Saturday of every, every month. Also, our adult exercise class is going well. We talked about last month, we, we started it, and it's not tonight, but tomorrow would be the tenth session, and then we're still doing it every Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday. On Tuesdays and Thursdays is five-thirty PM, and on Saturday, it's nine AM. Uh, we had several participants, uh, and we're hoping to get more people involved. Uh, also, we just wanna help reiterate, uh, what the report on, uh, Chief Lynn and, uh, Price talked about the Get Healthy Walking Initiative every second Saturday, so we're gonna continue to have that out at the Sand Beach Lake on. Last month, on July the tenth, it was, went very well. So, this Saturday, just wanna encourage everyone in the community to come out and walk, seven AM. Uh, the sun is shining, looking good off the lake, and it's just real nice walk. So, we wanna welcome everyone out. If you can, come out and walk with us. That's my report.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Ford.
What, what time did you say that exercise, what time?
The class.
Yeah, the class.
Tuesdays and Thursdays at five-thirty PM, and on Saturdays, nine AM. We're right here in the, uh, City Gym, here at the Municipal Center. Uh, trying to go about an hour till everybody, or until we pass out. So, we've been going right at an hour. It's, it's going very well.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, good.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Uh, Streets of Sanitation, I must add, we're gonna let you out the gate now. You ready to go?
Mayor, Council, uh, we've been cleaning, fresh washing sidewalks downtown, and, uh, we picked up a lot of bulk out of this time, and, uh, anyway, still having a haul of garbage to the water. I think Jimmy spoke, explained that a little bit about that this evening. And need to open bids on, uh, selling our old brush truck.
Uh, we got two here. One from Larry Watkins, City of Bolivar. Bid eleven thousand. Uh, Larry Watkins, Moscow. This one is from J. and J. and M. Tree Service. Uh, J. and M., thirteen thousand. So, we got these two. J. and M. Thirteen thousand, Larry Watkins, eleven thousand. So, I would suggest we take the thirteen from Mr. [inaudible].
Nah. I'll make a motion thirteen.
I got a motion, uh, first time Larry ever bid on a high bid here.
You're right. So true.
Got a motion from Ms. McKenna to take J. and M. Uh, thirteen thousand, second by Ms. Ray. If you will cash your votes.
First time.
Uh-huh. Motion care. So, we'll reach out to Mr. J. and M. Tomorrow, get that taken care. That was it on your report. Yep. Next planner, Mr. Golden?
Yeah, we had a meeting last month, July nineteenth, five, to review the HCC, HC Women's and Children Clinic Site Plan in Hardeman County, and submitted the plan, and the plan is gonna cover a square foot of over five thousand six hundred thirteen square feet and twenty-eight parking spaces, and that's with dumpsters and everything. All this be sitting on three acres of land. Voted to approve this site, and also discussed about the drafting of Highway Sixty-four. Uh, you, you know, making it, well, we're gonna have a bicycle, and we'll get from uptown down to the park. And we talking about, uh, multi-grants, so this won't be paid for by the city, it'll be paid for through the grant. So, we are favored toward this recommended to the City Council, but I guess we'll talk more about it in no time or whatever.
Where is the location for the clinic?
The Health Center, where the Hardeman County need the Health Center over there. By, is that on Knuckles?
Oh, okay. So, there's just an addition over there. Okay.
They're gonna build a, another building over there.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, they, do, do y'all have this, if y'all will be reviewing that, we, once at the next meeting, you'll vote on that. Uh, there's some pretty thick packet of it. It's pretty adept with surveys and the results and all this stuff. All right, uh, Librarian, Ms. Becky?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. For the month of July, we took in six hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-five cents in copies, fines, and taxes. We had thirteen programs with one hundred and sixty-seven participants. That's not counting the ASL classes that Brittany Willis, Willis did. She had probably forty-something for the whole month. Um, our material circ was nine hundred and ninety-nine for the month, computer users two hundred and fifty-two, wifi with eighteen hundred, and we had four hundred and fifty-two from the regional ebook and, uh, download system.
Thank you, Ms. Becky. Historic Zone Commission, Mr. Ray. Y'all don't have, I'm sorry, no meeting for Historic Zone for this. Uh, Zone and Compliance, Mr. Watkins?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You should have a copy of my report. Uh, had six building consultations, wrote three permits, four building inspections, four plumbing inspections, four mechanical inspections, issued thirty courtesy notices, got a little bit of grass cut around town, a few things done, and, uh, met with the Planning Commission on July the nineteenth. Uh, hoping we can give us a strong hearing within the next, probably next meeting, with the next, hopefully.
Okay. Out of them thirty, how much of that was grass? Me and Ms. Ray were talking about that earlier. I tell you, been putting out a lot.
It's, it's all right.
Majority of all of them. Yeah. Uh, I thank Mr. Watkins. Uh, Main, uh, Main Street and Devco meeting, got the date, and the minutes haven't been sent in, but basically had discussion from, um, Crossroads Wi-Fi, Crossroads Wi-Fi discussing, uh, Wi-Fi in the county, and made a presentation on behalf of, of them, and that was, uh, it for Devco and Main Street. All right, under old business, we'll call up Mr. Hardeman County Mayor, Mr. Jimmy Sain, turn it over to him. For the moment, we've all been waiting for. We're gonna give you a grand entrance.
We're just getting something nobody wants to talk about in the garage.
And if you guys, what we can do, we can, he got a presentation, so if y'all want to, we can move to the side and we're saying, but I can see it. Turn that light on.
That's all right.
No, no, you can't. Oh, okay. I don't want to lean on you.
All right, I enjoyed the governor conference with, uh, with Councilman Crawford and Golden and McKenna, and, and we, we got to talk a lot, uh, in between meetings and all. Uh, Councilman Golden asked me to, about the landfill, and I saw your last meeting where, where y'all were talking about it and worrying about where we're at. This is just a little presentation I got to show you how big of a situation this is and has been. And, uh, of course, Eddie, Eddie jokes about having to haul, but back in the nineties, at the, back in the nineties, Eddie knows he and Lloyd pretty much had the landfill, and he knows, uh, working with T-Dade, it's not always the easiest and simplest thing you can do. Did you get that on? So, that they, they don't run with anything, really. But the city had the landfill, and, uh, one reason it is where it's at was when they were looking at property. I happened to be on the commission back in the eighties when we jointly looked for a site. When we looked for a site that was close to the city of Bolivar for your hauling purposes, so you don't have so far to haul, you know, and that city had, run, was in charge around the landfill at the time, so it worked out good that they got it pretty close out here to the city because of downtime for your guys, you know, uh, sanitation department. So, it worked out good that it went there. Not so good for Middleton and Whiteville and the other areas that have to haul garbage, but it worked out good for Bolivar. So, in that site, which hopefully will come up here in a second.
Plug it back up.
Let's plug in. Plug in, let's try this. Let's try this. Jimmy got this, and practiced on this, and it worked perfect when nobody was here. It did. It came on. So we didn't have an issue, did we, Jimmy? Here, here it comes. So, so in the plan, when we originally got this landfill certified, used to, you know, part of this, we didn't have to have a certified landfill, and it was off of uh, same road going to Crestwood, that area there, which is now uh, some ballparks, they were just trenches back in the day, you could put garbage in a trench and cover it up. Now you have to have a liner, and you have to have certain walls sloped, and you can go so high with it, and uh, the ci, the county, the city had baled garbage for years, and finally they started just dumping it in there. There's a lot of issues with baling garbage uh, in the center, so. We had four phases originally planned out, and I'll, I'll show you those. That's phase one, I mean, phase two, phase one's to the left, and once you finish this and cap it off at the elevation that the state will allow, then you have to have a grass cover on it, you have to keep it mowed, and, and you have monitoring wells around the complete facility that we monitor monthly, to make sure that you don't get anything leaching out uh, from the rainwater that runs through your garbage. That's phase one, that's phase two, I mean, three, I'm sorry, phase three, and what happened in somewhere around the early two thousands, uh, the city and county were not uh, on the same page on, on the fee, monthly fee, and the state law said that the county government is responsible for the end use of garbage, not a city. So my understanding was the city gave it to the county, and said Merry Christmas, or whatever, and delivered all the, the books and the bills and the statements. So the county took it over. Um, originally, Robert Stegall was with GR, GRW Cliff at one time, and he went into his own. Robert is a genius at landfills, uh, and, and other things uh, that have to do with utilities, but Robert designed all this, uh, phase one, two, three, uh, two, three, and then phase four over there was gonna be probably the final phase, I think there may be a little space past that, but not much. So Robert uh, designed phase one, uh, I was here, phase, most of phase two, we never had an issue. Uh, the state thanks a lot of Robert Stegall, and what he tells them, and what he does. So phase two filled up, uh, the county was running phase two and three, and you see phase three was working its way back to the highway. And that far left corner there of phase three is, is where the wall was to join phase four. And somewhere, uh, keep in mind, I didn't come in till September of fourteen, somewhere in twenty-eleven or twelve, I don't know what happened, previous administration, but they chose, chose to go with another firm other than Robert Stegall, who designed this entire site, and knew everything about it. They hired a firm out of Memphis, and they were gonna do phase four, so they bid it out, I think it was a little less than a million dollars to do phase four, and put the liner and all in. Well, I'll zoom in on phase four, and I'll show you the, the problem child. That's phase four, and at the top right is where phase three, where you're just looking at it. So you see the lifts on the wall there, and about middle of your page, you see a little pond. Well, what happened with this was, the way these things are constructed, and I'm no engineer, but I'm telling you what I, all I know, you see the liner on the walls, top left and bottom right. Uh, this is a, a, a vinyl rubber material that cannot be breached, it has to be welded anytime you have a tear or anything in it. It's, it's a pretty big deal uh, to put those liners in, but the liner was put in, and then it's all the way across that bottom floor of that uh, phase four, and it can't, like I said, it can't be breached, and you have to have somewhere around eight inches of clay cover on the floor, so when trucks and equipment's in there, it won't, it won't bust that liner. So they put phase four in, and that wall was all the way across where you see the little pond in the middle, I'll tell you what that is just a second. So that is the divider between two and three, and this is phase four, pretty much, don't hold me to the, it's not, it's not scaled or anything. And here's the problem. There's your phases, now, at the bottom of a, of a landfill, like phase four and the other phases, it's kinda like a septic, if, if you guys seen a septic line, where you got your perforated pipe, and it's seeing gravel, and liquid seeps down in there, and then gravity flows. So this thing's designed to gravity flow from phase one through two to three, and out to the middle of four. There's phase two line, phase one line, this is closed, not scaled, and then you have a main line. Well, these three lines got blocked up in that wall of garbage. So the first thing you would do, any of us in here, you don't have to be an engineer, if you're gonna run, run this line, now all those lines gravity flow down to the far left, you see that piece of equipment, and it goes into a holding tank, where that uh, that fluid gets treated. So any of us in this room would locate the three lines from phase two and phase three to shoot an elevation and see where they're at, because this phase four line has to gravity flow, and, and you know what I mean by gravity flow downhill, it won't run uphill. So they never located the three lines from phase two and phase three, it was, they were, they were blocked up in the garbage for over a year, I think, during construction. So they went ahead, and they went off as-built plan, and as-built plan, you folks know, if you've done any, any building engineering projects, the as-built shows elevation that it should have been built at, and that don't mean it got built at that exact elevation, and it surely doesn't mean that after twenty-five years, it didn't drop down in garbage, it been compacted. So uh, the state came in and said, you know, you gotta locate them lines and look them up, you can't use phase four, and this is somewhere in thirteen or fourteen. So we, we bid this project out, we, we didn't get any bids for like, two different bids, because nobody wanted to go in there and handle this problem. So we used Darren Grantham to go in, and he's, he's the one that dug into that wall right there, and located those three lines, and those were located somewhere in fifteen. Once we got the lines located, the company that bid the job came in, and they were gonna, uh, the, the project was to put a new line down, lower the line, liner, and hook those three into that one, so it would all gravity flow out, and we could start using phase four. When they came in and unstopped those three lines, leachate liquid just kept pouring out, and that thing was like a, kinda like a, a commode, as the level went down, as we pumped it down, it rose, it rose back up. They worked on this thing for weeks and weeks, and finally, uh, we, you know, 'cause we hired Robert Stegall to come back on this project. Robert said it could be millions of gallons of, of leachate backed up in phase two and three. So we couldn't handle taking a truck and pumping up all that tank and hauling it over to the uh, city sewer line. So Robert suggested um, doing a plan to run a, a permanent line from the tank, which is left of the screen, up sixty-four, permanently into the city sewer system. That took months to bid that out, do a plan, uh, where it would, would continuously pump, and that was about a four hundred thousand dollar deal right there, about a year and a half to two years it took them to do that. So in this time, we got it where we could handle it, but you see what we fight most of, most of the time during the year, it becomes a lake, because it's so low, holding water on that liner. So we've been pumping it out, coming up with a plan, Robert come up with a plan, and we had to have a, a, a secondary engineering company, we use A two H Engineering out of Memphis, they're also very good at landfills. So they came in, and they were gonna put that liner on there, then the state said, no, it's not gonna work, because you only have so many inches of head pressure, which head pressure is the elevation before it runs gravity flow. So they shut us down on that project, that's about the time we started hauling. The state did not shut the landfill down. We stopped uh, putting garbage up there on phase three, because of the danger of dozer sliding down at the bank, because people were working down the bottom of it. So we started hauling into uh, Walnut. So um, A two H's come up with a plan to bore a line, under the liner, without breaching that liner, come up in that little pool in the middle, and hook all the lines up, and let it flow under. That, we worked on that for weeks, then the state said, no, we're not gonna, we're not gonna prove that, because what if it blocks up under that liner, and you got garbage on it? Well, that makes sense to some point, but what are you gonna do if it's at the bottom of the garbage, anyway, if the line blocks on top of liner? So I can't tell you all the reasons why they, their theories. So we backed up, and we had a plan now, A two, A two H and Robert Stegall got together, and after all this time, they're gonna cut the liner open, which we can't do that, we gotta have the liner company come in and do that. They gotta be on the site, all this has gotta be timed, because they can't afford for it to rain or anything in there, and, and get it all wet under the liner, so all that's gotta be protected. So the plan is now, they'll start with the three lines connect, they're gonna cut that liner all the way back to where the equipment is, where that phase four line is, they're gonna go in there and V shape it to the depth they need to get gravity flow, and then they're gonna have to put the liner back in the V, and then they're about to put those three lines, hook them up, and run that line down in there, get gravity flow at the right elevation. So it's basically kinda put in backers. Once they get all that done, the state will approve us going ahead and using phase four. Now the uh, the kicker is, and I've tried, Julian knows, he's talked to me in depth about it, this phase four, after, I don't know how long this will last, it was projected fifteen to twenty years at one point, uh, I don't know with the, with the volume of garbage we have now, but once this phase four is full, we're always gonna have to haul garbage somewhere, whether it's Walnut, uh, McNairy County's hauling now, theirs have been shut down, Fayetteland Field's full and shut down, they're hauling to Walnut, I mean, that's gonna be a thing in the future, all of us, uh, we're hauling garbage too. The county is, we're hauling every day. Garbage is a problem, it's not gonna go away, we can't, I mean, it's just gonna be there. Julian and I talked to, to uh, Pat Harcourt, one of the owners and engineers of A two H, at the Governor's Conference, and, and Julian heard, heard part of the conversation where they think they got, they're gonna get a green light. I called him this morning, told him I was coming before you guys, and I need to update, he called me at about five fifteen, and said, everything's good, we're gonna meet Wednesday for like, a pre-construction kind of deal. I keep my fingers crossed, I want this thing fixed as bad as y'all do, and we're hauling garbage too, just daily. So that's, that's the wrap-up on what the problem is, on what you guys see it, uh, you know what I know now. Uh, it's just a mistake by an engineering company that should have shot those lines to start with, and they've known where to put the liner. So I, I don't know what else to say, um, I know it's expensive to haul garbage, but we're all doing it, um, and we want it, we want it fixed as bad as you do. But keep in mind, the nine dollars everybody pays goes to run landfill, or to put your garbage, the end-use place, it doesn't go to keep anybody's hauling, the nine dollars though. So everybody's responsible, Whiteville, Middleton, everybody's responsible, and have been for years, to bring their garbage over to Oliver, you know, to put in the landfill, so. A lot of rumors floating around out there and all this stuff. I talked to Miss Ray, I, I went over through this with her back some time ago, uh, to explain, but the picture, I think, helps a little bit to know where we're at, and what's going on. I'll have, I'll ask Julian to go to the meeting Wednesday with us, uh, so he can keep y'all informed of what's going on, 'cause y'all have the biggest volume of garbage, you know, other than the county, so. But all of our convenience centers have, have never shut down, they're all running. The landfill's open, um, we're just not putting garbage in there, but we've got the green boxes and all, there at the landfill, so. Are there any questions, do you think I can, I might can answer for you?
Questions, man, about?
Let me, let me, let me ask, let me check on this. Um, you said now we are hauling it into Walnut, Mississippi?
Yeah.
Okay. Is Walnut, Mississippi landfill, is, I, I've never been down there, so is that a big s, huge?
I haven't.
Oh, 'cause you got, talking about different towns are going into Walnut?
Right.
How long would that, you know?
I, I asked a guy, I haven't been down there, but I asked him, and uh, they bought, I think, another two hundred acres, it's huge, that's all they do, is start the business. And they don't take, we work baling garbage, they don't, I told you, they don't take bales, they'll take the bales, but they don't put them in their landfill. They have to open them all back up, and then they compact their garbage, so there's no need to bail anymore, you know, if they're not gonna use them.
Well, um, another question there, I know we are hauling, City of Oliver, it's hauling down in Walnut, Mississippi, and uh, and I was gonna ask one question, but I guess I'm gonna re, rephrase it, or re, re, reword it. Do we have a timeframe when the landfill will be in full operation, do we have kinda like a timeframe, or we, we just?
Uh, you know, they told me probably six to eight uh, weeks, back when we started hauling to Walnut, and that's the, the perfect storm, and it didn't happen. And it was really, hell, it's like, nothing I can do, you know, T-Dag is T-Dag. One thing they've worked with us really well, is, the reason is, uh, like anything we do at that landfill, they have to approve the plans, they have to be on site to make sure it goes in right, they, they have a lot of responsibility, it's T-Dag, we have to have permits to pay them, and my question to them was, where were you when this thing went in that bad, when, when it factors? So they, they, they've admitted they had a, they had a lapse.
So the, the problem come in, Ethel Stegall, oh, was no longer there, that's where the problem started?
Right, it was another firm out of Memphis that was hired to do phase four, and uh, the liner company has met with us on site to work all this out, and they said the company out of Mississippi that built this phase four were farmers, and they built it with farm equipment, they'd never built a landfill before.
I got a question, Jimmy. Uh, is it possible that we could find another site, you know, out of, all the money it gonna take to fix this, and it's all about having a big hole, right? Dig it out, or making another one somewhere in our county?
I don't think with the new regulations, we'll ever have another landfill in Hardman County. And the reason we gotta finish this one off, is you have to close it, so now you gotta have the cover over it, and, so whatever we do, we gotta spend a bunch of money to close it, so we might as well use it.
Yeah. Well, I know you say after so many years, we gonna have to do something else anyway, maybe the last fifteen years, and
Yeah, hopefully.
So we gotta be looking for some other plan, some, some other hole, or whatever.
It's just too expensive to get in landfill business again, I know, I don't think there are, I may be telling you wrong, I don't think there are about six rural owned left, and everybody used to have a landfill, but now it's just too expensive. So only the big boys are surviving landfill business, and they do so much volume that they can survive, but no rural counties that I know of are doing it anymore, not putting new ones in. So it's a problem, it's gonna be a problem here on that.
So I guess you're saying that uh, once this closed out here in Oliver, uh, that we're gonna have to start hauling it somewhere else, I'm assuming, it'd be Walnut, I'm assuming now, I don't know, yeah, I'm just assuming.
That's the closest.
Yeah, okay, I'm just assuming that that's where it's gonna be.
There's several in Memphis, but I think uh, Walnut's probably better.
Well, it would be close, yeah.
And especially for like, the south part of the county, it's a lot, it's closer to the middle, but it is kind of Oliver, so.
How much is Walnut charging us to uh, to uh, haul, not haul, like, trash, garbage, but to dispose of it down there, do you have any, that?
I believe it's twenty-five dollars a ton, but don't hold me to that, it's around twenty-five, because us, we were, we were at twenty-two, we may be at twenty-four now.
Now the county pays.
Correct.
Yeah, we pay all that, and it's costing us about thirty thousand a month.
Well, say the county pay it, we pay it.
Well, it comes out of your nine dollars, and your nine dollars is paying, so. Yeah, none of the cities, nobody has to pay down there, we pay the tab for all the, everything in the county with the nine dollars, that's where that money goes.
So what would you think, what would you say, how much money have we wasted since the, uh, Stegall left?
Well, we wasted money by, by, of course, having a problem in phase four, but as far as hauling in Walnut, we're not, we're not really wasting money, uh, because we're just buying time off this sale.
Right, but I'm talking about with our landfill, I'm talking about with our landfill.
Oh, probably, that move of letting Robert Stegall, Stegall go, probably cost us Oh, probably that move of letting Robert Stegoff go probably cost us half a million. At least that much.
Wow. You think we have it going by the end of year, between now and the end of year?
Boy, Eddie, hold your ears. They have told us that it could be fixed as quick as a couple of weeks. We just gotta get everybody there, we have to orchestrate the liner company being there, on-site. T-Dag's gotta be there on-site, construction's gotta be there on-site. You gotta have third-party inspectors on-site, you gotta have people testing on-site. All that's gotta be done, once it gets done, it's not a big deal. It's probably two-hundred feet across that thing. But everybody's gotta be there at the same time because they won't let you cut it and then say, well, the line people are coming next week, it don't work like that. I mean, you know, the weather's gotta be perfect, it's gotta be dry. It's a complicated deal that I inherited, I didn't make. None of us did.
Well, is there any way possible that you can come and forward a council, not every month? You know, I'm not asking for every month, be nice to have, but I'm not asking for that. But every quarterly or when you present something to the county commissioner, you can come and present something to, just give an update because we on live on social media. So when you discuss that, then people will hear this.
Right.
And then we won't be getting as many calls.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to hear, which is good, we hear it from the mayor, which is fine. But since this is a county, I guess county problem, I think it should come from the county, you know. So just every now and then, you know, if he can do that, you know, that will help us out.
Yeah, I'll, Mayor Matizik can go with me Wednesday or when the meeting's scheduled, maybe he can send y'all out an email and say, we're gonna start on the project or whatever, let you know that it's going on. But the only difference is the garbage is not ending up there, it's going to Walnut. But all of our other services are running, we just gotta haul Walnut. And I, you know, like I said, I hate it as bad as anybody. I wish it would've been done back last November, December when we planned it.
Well, I say I appreciate you coming out because, you know, it was, you know, it's education for us because we weren't aware of what was, what you presented here. You know, and then showing it on social media would make it, you know, people can see for themselves. So that's why I was saying maybe, you know, every now and then, the county mayor come here and present it like you do at the county commission, that would just make it much easier, you know. And I appreciate you coming.
If we have any hiccups between now and your next meeting, maybe we can get A2H or Walnut engineers to come. And they, why we didn't get it done between now and the next one. I hope it's between now and the next one, I wanna get that off my back, that's y'all there.
Well, we appreciate it.
Thank you, my son, appreciate you.
Did you have a question?
Okay, thank you, my son, appreciate you for coming and updating us on that. That's all our old business, on the new business, got the first reading of ordinance twenty-one zero zero three to amend title four, chapter two, section four, two fifteen of the Baller municipal code to establish holidays for the city of Baller. Basically, if you guys know, federal government added Juneteenth as a federal holiday, and I would like to add Juneteenth to our list of holidays for the city. And also employee birthday is something I just wanted to do for the employees, maybe help out with morale or something, not that it's bad, but anything we can do, we got a good group of guys. They don't, they don't use their time, they don't abuse it, and I just wanted to add that to their, to their list of holidays. So of course, June nineteenth will be observed on June nineteenth. And the employee birthday, they will be able to take that the week before, the week of, or the week after. Just have that coincide with the department head. So that's what those days are, that's what that ordinance is.
Now, when you speak of a birthday holidays, now, correct me if I'm wrong here, I'm just thinking. It's not a overtime-paid holiday, it's not like any other holiday?
No, uh-uh.
Okay, it's not like, you know, the, what, June, July the fourth holiday or something like that? It's usually time and a half or, you know, you get paid extra. The birthday holiday is, and I just wanna make sure I'm clear on this, is usually the person would take, not come in that day, you get paid your regular pay. No more than just your regular pay, you just don't come in that day.
Right, you just get a day.
Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's just a day off.
Day off, right, okay, as long as it's not a.
A holiday payday, overtime.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm getting at, as long as it's not overtime, is what I was.
No, uh-uh, just a regular.
All right.
Paid day.
Got you.
Any other, any other questions on that?
Mayor, the ordinance reads that we're adding Columbus Day.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I, yes, that one on there as well. BEA and I think of the banks are closed on that day also. And I don't, Jimmy, are y'all closed on Columbus Day? I don't know if the county is or not, but I know, I wanna say they are, but I just think that it's, I know the banks, I don't, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but I know the banks and BEA, they're closing. I just wanted to coincide with them, a lot of times, we're the only one that's open on that day.
I'm not sure.
So that was, I'm sorry, I had notes about explaining Juneteenth and I skipped right over that one. So it'd be those three.
All right, let me clarify one other thing, Mr. McKinnon said time and a half is being paid for these holidays?
No, he just asked that, I don't know why, he asked that, nobody.
Well, man, when you work like Labor Day or Independence Day, you get a, what, you get an extra, you get something.
You get paid for the day.
No, 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 I'm talking about the holidays. Now, you're talking about the day off, now that's different, I was talking about.
Holiday, you should just be getting paid a regular day. Because it says right here, for anybody that receives comp time, they only get comp time hour for hour, so they wouldn't be getting paid more than hour for hour.
Well, I mean, with the state now, we, when we work the holiday, we get paid extra for that day. We get the regular pay plus time and a half.
Yeah, when you work there, if you work.
Yeah, right, right, if you work, yeah. That's what I was talking about, if they was, you know.
They take the day off, I don't know.
Y'all don't get the day off and just get paid, that's, that's fine.
No, and they're.
All of them shaking their head, they ain't got overtime, eh?
And they're just getting, and if they work, they just get comp time. They don't get paid extra, they just get comp time all.
Right, to make up for that, that.
Okay, well, I didn't know that.
Not time and a half, I just wanted to clarify that.
No.
Yeah.
Any other questions on that? You don't confuse everybody.
Why me, I, maybe not a time and a half, but I know you get more than your regular pay. That's if you work, you know, but, you know, if you're off, if you're off, you know, you get comp.
That's some of them, that's some of them state benefits you been getting, we ain't getting them state benefits.
We don't elaborate on his state figure, they ain't getting that.
Any other questions on that? There are motion to approve ordinance twenty-one zero zero three. Have a motion by us, problems there, second, second by council. All right, casual votes, please. Motion, Carrick. Next ordinance is ordinance twenty-one zero zero four, budget amendment for the fire department holiday pay. If you guys have that, it's also an explanation behind it too for this budget amendment. But I'll just tell you real quick what it was, if y'all know, fire department, we hadn't had, we had this problem a lot, but this problem here is basically, we had a fireman that had some court proceedings that he had to go through, and he was off, and the other guys basically had to cover his shift. And for them covering the shift, they weren't able to get their holiday pay. And Chief Price asked me about doing a budget amendment to pay that for them. And I told him I agreed, I think it's only fair that we pay them for it. Usually, our policy says if you don't use the holidays by June thirtieth, you lose them. But they worked this time, it wasn't their fault that they lost the holidays. They had to cover the shift and they, I think they deserved to get paid, so that's what that budget amendment is for. Any questions on that? There's a motion to approve ordinance twenty-one zero zero four.
So move.
Motion by Ms. Spence, second by Mr. McKinnon, if you will, casual votes, please. Motion, Carrick. And the final thing is just an approval for Blue Cross Healthy Places Grant application. Blue Cross does a grant every year, they call it Healthy Places Grant. I have to have approval for the, from the council to apply for this grant. There is no match, it's for a, we're applying for a splash pad, there's no match to it. They just wanna know that we have the council's support.
Where will it be located?
We're standing at the city park by the swimming pool area. And let me, let me say one thing about the swimming pool. Last year, we had it closed because of COVID, this year, there are some repairs that need to be done out there to the pool. We didn't have the time to open, we didn't open the gym back up, I think, to June. So to put together, Curtis getting lifeguards and getting all this stuff done, it's just a process to get the pool back open. We plan to have it open next year and we'll have to do some repairs to it. So if anybody asks us what happened with the pool this year. But we're looking at taking that Healthy Places Grant, if we get it, putting it out there at the pool, right next to the pool out there. Any questions on it?
Don't move.
Motion to approve Blue Cross Healthy Places Grant application from Mr. McKinnon, is there a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Spence, if you will, casual vote. Motion, Carrick. One last thing before we leave, our internet, we're working, trying to get a news to come in here and get us some better Wi-Fi. If anybody asks, the meeting was, we recorded it, we will put it back on the website tomorrow. So if y'all got any calls or texts, I'm just saying, the meeting wasn't live tonight, that's just because we was, our Wi-Fi's down. So we'll have the meeting on the website, what, twelve tomorrow sometime, sometime tomorrow, okay? All right, there a motion to adjourn?
Let me say this, I apologize, I don't mean, I didn't mean to confuse anybody.
I was just messing with you there.
I just wanna set the record straight, you know, I just wanna make sure that everybody understands, McKinnon don't do that, try to confuse anybody, because if I do that, then I'm confused. So I don't wanna confuse anybody, I apologize if you were. And with that being said, I make a motion that we rise and leave.
Motion is second, all of them say aye, motion, Carrick.